Good evening and welcome to the July 31st, 2023 Board of Education Special Work Session. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Monday, July 31st, 2023 Board of Education Special Work Session be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, this is a roll call vote.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Merschrock? Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Barturdean?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
President Tominski?
Aye.
And back to you, Director Merschrock. Can you hear me? Do you have an aye, Director Merschrock?
Aye.
Thank you.
Director Merschrock is joining us this evening via Zoom. The only agenda item is an update on the facility's master plan. I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Grover and John Galbraith.
Thank you so much, President Tominski and Board of Education members for continuing the conversation, I should say. So initially in our timeline, we were scheduled to bring potentially bond language before you tonight. After our last meeting that we had in conjunction with the city and the opportunity continuing to go out and to have conversations with constituents, we really feel like tonight will allow us the opportunity to provide more clarity in some areas where we feel like we've received some questions, as well as try to answer some questions and try to see if there are other considerations as it relates to where we are in regards to the bond issue that we have been discussing for quite some time and whether or not we want to move forward. I think that we should note that as we go forward, that I believe you have a PowerPoint in front of you. I had to try to go back to the old Franklin Covey of beginning with the end in mind. And I think that's important is no matter when this conversation started several years ago and with the administration, I think the heart of the matter is still the same, that we want every learner to be future-ready. And really comes down to how does this plan play into our students being future-ready? What we're hoping to define even further about our facilities and how they contribute to this ideal concept, our vision of our students being future-ready is number one, we want to make sure that our students are in safe, secure, and conducive learning environments. That's important to us and we're going to talk more about that tonight. The other part of it is making sure that our students have access and opportunities. Do they have access to a high-quality education? Do they have the opportunity to even take advantage of offerings that may exist in certain parts of our district and maybe not in others? We also want to make sure that our students have real-time college and career experiences. The way we define success of the work that we do is really who our students become and what they're able to do when they graduate, when they leave our system, and that's important for us. So as we move forward tonight, we want to probably come to some common understanding that we also recognize that we are dealing with a large organization here, serving almost 16,000 students. Okay? And when we think about that, and I believe our community is something with more than 153,000 people, we know that we're going to hear different opinions. People have different interests. Our common understanding comes back to our students and the students that we serve and the positions that we're in. And we're going to always have a certain level of detail of information that may or may not be available to the general public. So I want us to keep that in mind. The other part of it is, is that there is nothing wrong with us getting additional input and insight from other organizations. Whether or not we're able to act upon it, it still comes down to the goals that we're trying to achieve and whether or not we're being responsible to our students, responsible to our taxpayers, responsible and accountable in the positions that we're in. And so as we move forward tonight, we're going to do our best to try to make sure that we answer in detail. And I will say, we could spend all night, we could go to however many levels of data, we can go back and we can pull tons of reports. But I do want to applaud our team. I feel like they have tried to go back and peel back, consider. And so some people may feel like, oh, well, you're throwing a dart, you know, in the dark, or you're changing, you're twisting, you're doing all these things. And for me just coming in at the point that I'm in, I'm glad I've had the opportunity to hear multiple perspectives at this time. I do believe tonight, as we share the information, yeah, there may be other questions and I encourage us to continue to have conversations with as many constituents as possible. But we're hoping to get to a decision point here tonight that will give us a path forward, that will lead to ultimately not sacrificing any more time or making concessions in ways that where our kids are not benefiting. At the end of the day, our students, they need the best from us and they need it from us now. I hope we would keep that in mind as we go forward. So one of the first slides here, and so I hope that we can kind of see this as a conversation. It is a work session. So you may see some back and forth here with John and I as we kind of have some of the conversations. I kind of share up the team today, just talk about it the same way we do in the meetings because, I mean, these are the issues that we're faced with and we want you all to be able to have those same conversations and weigh in as well. So as presented by RSP last week, they talked a lot about our enrollment pattern. So we'd be interested in knowing what type of information or questions that you have walked away with with our enrollment. I probably should have had Carl at the table too. And so John, do you want to go in or you want me to start talking at this point?
Go for it.
Okay. All right. So we heard a lot about our enrollment. And so what we were able to pull up today was just to really take a look at, this is from our state reporter. Kind of shows Cedar Rapids Community School District along with some of our surrounding communities. You're able to see that there and it kind of shows the changes. And I'm sure you've seen this before, but again, this is just kind of set in context. You can see that we've had a 6% loss as we look back since 2018 to today. And you can see the other districts where either they're staying the same or stagnant, or they're growing. Okay? And you can look at some are growing by 23%, 25%, 2% growth. But with Cedar Rapids, we were declining at a rate of 6% in our enrollment. That's from our state reporter. So we also just want to make sure that we're checking and balancing too. On the next page, you can see here that we've had, what does that equate to? We had a total loss since 2008 of 2,600 students within our school district. And we looked at pretty much our butts in the seats type of numbers, who actually showed up was in our school district. So if we kind of take into account the information that we heard last week as it relates to the capacity of our buildings. So when we looked at our elementary schools, right now we're operating at about 78% of capacity of those buildings. That's currently today. And so we know that we have an elementary plan that's solid, already been approved. And there is nothing, I asked the team today, have we learned anything that changes the direction of that plan? And no, because what we're seeing with enrollment, and you can see what's happened here, that our capacity is not showing us that we need additional schools in addition to some of the other areas that need improvement. But we did want to kind of look out because that was kind of brought up where the city is going to grow. We are growing. What about that? Are we taking that into account? Well, it's projected according to RSP that five years from now, we'll use that five year just as a benchmark, that we will probably grow by 260 students in our elementary, at our elementary level. But what does that mean for us closing buildings and the buildings that we will have at that particular point? So when this plan is said and done across our school district, we will have an additional 450 seats. Okay? So even though they say in five years we will grow by 260, but that's a good time to pause though. So if that indeed happens, now I don't know what your experience is with demographers, but sometimes the projections, we have to see if they actually turn out to be what they say. So in five years from now, we'll be able to take a pause and we'll be able to see. That's a really pretty good time for us because if we're thinking about going back out in Phase Two of the bond as is proposed right now, we'll have that opportunity to make adjustments if we see more students at that particular time or if we don't, right? So there's an opportunity for a pause point based on elementary. Now, if we were to look at the middle school, right now we're operating at 67% capacity. And when we are operating at capacity and we can do some further analysis on this, but you just have to keep in mind that you're losing millions of dollars each year when you're not operating at capacity, just in addition to everything else. So with that being said, five years from now at our middle schools, we're projected to lose an additional 26 students. So we're already at 67% capacity. There's no sign of growth in our middle school if we're going to just use the same information that we've been using to make all of the decisions. High school, we're currently operating at 85% capacity. Five years from now, we're looking to gain 64 students. That's great, but it still doesn't get us at maximum capacity.
Can I chime in here quick, real quick, Dr. Grover? So we talked about current capacity is 78% at the elementary level. So at the end of our elementary plan, when we're down to 13 elementaries, that number will go from 78% to 95% like Dr. Grover had said, and that's including that 260 number in there. Like Dr. Grover said, as we get closer to 2029, five years from now, 2028, five years from now, we can evaluate it then that is that still, are we still comfortable with the capacity that we have versus what our enrollment projections are? Or do we need to make a tweak at that time to say, hey, we're a little bit shy of where we need to be? How can we tweak those buildings to increase our capacity, but to still run higher than that 78%? So is this efficient a possible with the space that we have?
So maybe, John, I'll let you kind of move over to kind of talk about the location. The other question that we kind of heard is where are our schools located? Now, I want to front load this just a little bit in regards to our responsibility as a school district. Our resources, they follow the students. Every organization has to have to have some type of decision-making guideline. Our students, they are our marker. So where our students are, that's where the resources follow. So if we want to talk a little bit here in regards to our plan when it finishes and based on what we're seeing in terms of student density, and it was, I guess, affirming to be able to hear the demographer as well as the city come into agreement that we're seeing the same numbers. I don't think there was any question about that part on the table. So John, if you want to just talk a little bit about where students are falling within the quadrant? And Ryan, feel free to chime in if necessary.
Yeah. So as we look at the map here, really the question, I think we heard it a couple of times at City Council and throughout other feedback as well as where our schools located. So trying to break that down, I think all of us have lived in Cedar Rapids for a while here. And, you know, we have the natural divide of the river that's the east and the west, and then the north and south is by First Avenue, which I think it can be confusing to people because neither one of those run true north-south or true east-west. So the quadrants of the city get a, they're a little hard to follow at times. But I'm with this, we end up with nine buildings in the northeast quadrant, six in the southeast quadrant, six in the northwest, and three in the southwest. So I guess our distribution there, you know, maybe the southwest is a little lacking. But really what we're trying to do is do what we can to spread our buildings, our assets throughout the city, but also placing buildings where our population are, where our kids are, is really a highlight of this plan is we don't want to put this in a neighborhood where we don't have students. We want to put it where our kids are to the best of our ability within the constraints that we have because of where our schools are currently located. Where there's land that's appropriately sized for these schools. So those are the constraints that we really have to work within that does make that difficult.
Let's try to see if we can unpack that just a little bit. What are you going to say?
Yeah, I was going to say too, that if you take a look there, the southwest side went to three, but really we started with, I believe, if you count five, because we'd only be closing CRA or consolidating CRA and Wilson. So that we never had a huge amount of schools in the southwest side. Also, I would take your attention to First Ave. If you follow First Ave through the city and count the number of schools that are just basically on either side of First Ave. So when you talk about the center of the city or the heart of the city or wherever you are, all like along First Ave, you could flip-flop pretty close. A lot of our schools are along that first road, First Ave. So if you take, so coming back to that idea of where are our schools and where is the heart of our city or whatnot, they're along the First Ave and that's where a lot of our schools live.
Okay. And I do just want to point out, and I think you have City View there in what would be considered, I would assume, the core as been defined to me. We talked about McKinley in that particular area. And I think the new plan does call for some renovation at McKinley to keep that school open. And then Taylor, you can see, was there, but we're not going to reveal where we feel like there are flood challenges. So just so you understand some of the complexities there. And I know there would be an opportunity for conversations and collaborations and understanding as the city addresses some of those, what that looks like for us if we were to see any type of enrollment increases in that particular area.
So if we go to the next slide there, Justin. So the state of the school, so other dilemmas that we have. So we talked a little bit about capacity of buildings and it's a fairly simple mathematical equation. When we say, what's the building capacity when we look at that from a classroom perspective, right? So how many classrooms do we have? What's our target number of kids per classroom depending on age level? Add that up and here's your building capacity. One other thing that gets forgotten about at times is the capacity of our common spaces. So when we talk about our cafeterias, our gyms, our auditoriums, is how many students can those handle at any given time? The cafeteria specifically, you know, that will only seat so many kids. So if our building enrollment grows to a point where you have to have four or five different lunch shifts, then we're really talking about kids starting to eat lunch at 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning, all the way through 1, 1:30, 2 o'clock, because that's all that cafeteria can handle. And I think there's a lot of studies out there based on when kids are able to eat their meals and their success in the classroom is a real thing. So just a note there, based on how you look at capacity, it's not just the number of desks for kids, but we have to take into other considerations. Flood zones, Dr. Grover talked about that there. 2008 flood, Taylor was our only building to take water into the building, only building in the flood zone. HVAC, so existing buildings, we still have 11 buildings that operate on window air conditioners. 11 of our 31 buildings operate on window air conditioner. So a couple of things with that, the noise in the learning environment. We've had a couple of open houses here recently in the last year. At Madison Elementary, for example, trying to have an open house, a public meeting there, and we have the window air conditioner on because it's hot outside and you can't hear. So I can imagine during the school day what that's like for students in the classroom to be there and try to have an active learning environment while trying to hear their teacher over the air conditioner. Also with that, as we talk about, excuse me, healthier and the lack of ventilation that that brings. So window air conditioners do not bring in any fresh air. So there's studies on that as well, on what effect that has on students in the learning environment and not having access to that fresh air. ADA compliance, yes, sorry, Ryan, thank you. So as we look at ADA compliance through our buildings, we have three buildings that would be up to code and current code. And that's our three latest buildings, Maple Grove, West Willow, and Viola Gibson. All other buildings need improvements in some capacity. What that means is we're not up to current code. That doesn't mean we're in violation because it's all based on when the building was built or when the addition was made. So we're okay in that aspect, but they aren't to current code. So we have students that suffer in our buildings who don't have the opportunity or the access because of our current state of our ADA in our buildings. Fine arts and athletics. So if we look at these facilities, our extracurricular facilities or co-curricular facilities in some cases, you know, at our middle school level, our track and fields are cinder. They aren't an all-weather track. Some of them are 400 yards, some are 200 yards. We don't have any at the middle school level that's a 400-meter track. So there are competitions. They have to travel elsewhere. Once in a while, they get to have an event down at Kingston. But they don't get to have a home event very often and they don't get to practice and have the same experience as our other districts in our area. We have a couple of elementary buildings that they play their home basketball games on the stage because that is their largest gym or that is their best gym to have a basketball game on. We jumped to the high school level here for a bit. We have one turf field in town and we've talked about this quite a bit. And that doesn't only affect athletics, but that also affects our fine arts too. Our marching bands don't have a spot to practice. They take turns and get a practice on Kingston once a week. Getting all of that equipment there is a challenge when you're across town. During the day, our parking lots are full of cars with students and staff. So when it's been a muddy week or a rainy week, we get to trounce through the mud, which isn't great. And then there's a lot of repair to do on those fields for whether that's a football field or soccer field. It's used for more than just marching band. When we talk about the cold weather climates and our ground freezes here in Iowa, right? So if we have the safety concerns that we have with soccer, football players after that ground freezes and concussions and so forth versus being on an artificial field, artificial turf field that takes those into consideration. One other thing on the fine art side is the lack of band and orchestra classrooms at our middle school level. Those weren't designed for those spaces, those types of programs in our middle school level. They're really just a larger classroom area. So when we talk about acoustics in those areas, they don't have the space for small group or individual practice space within those buildings that our new buildings would be able to provide those students with that access and opportunity. And financial impact, we've talked about this before too, as we look at the cost of a smaller building. Wilson, for example, the middle school level with the 350, 360 kids enrollment versus Harding, which is just over 700. You know, $1,500 more per student to operate Wilson versus Harding. That's money that can be used to reinvest back into our kids and give them more opportunities. We heard, we heard last week when we were with the city, concerns about the closing of the West Side schools. So one thing we looked at and that we heard there was, do we need to have two middle schools on the West Side? Similar to what we're doing in the Washington attendance area with McKinley and Franklin. So we did take a look at that. And turning Roosevelt into that sixth-grade academy, so similar to McKinley, and then turning Taft into a 7, 8 building, similar to Franklin. When we do that, that would be an increase in our ask of roughly $56 million. So as we look at that, really the reason for that is, is when we go from an 800 building or from a 1,200-student building to an 800-student building, really what the difference is between those two buildings is our classroom space. You still have the same amount of gyms and sizes of gyms. Your cafeteria is the same. Your common spaces stay the same. So as you look about building efficiency, that 1,200 number really brings you to that building efficiency on the finance side of things and on the academic side of things as well.
Okay. So let's talk a little bit about, I know some of what we heard in regards to the current plan that we will have, the 1,200-student population and students traveling to the Taft location was in regards to transportation. So for me, you know, I had to go and look at, well, we're currently busing, right? And so how far are kids traveling right now on our buses? And so we would look at, we have students that are traveling up to 10 miles on our buses right now. To make the transition with the middle schools in regards to traveling over to Taft, that would be a little bit over five miles. So really, that's almost half of what we are currently asking students to do right now in regards to transportation. So again, this is just as a matter of fact. And when it comes down to the transportation, and we can talk more about this, we do take into account, we are able, and we do currently provide some transportation for after-school programming if needed. We do want to be realistic that as far as staffing challenges are concerned, I think that we continue to face some challenges as it relates to bus drivers. I think that's a national headline, always something to work through. And I do believe that that would be part of what we need to do is understand from our parents, you know, what type of support do they need and what are the options for us to be able to support them? But just want to clarify on transportation that we currently have students that are traveling on buses. And to say that, you know, some students don't know how to ride the bus or can't ride the bus and so forth like that, I don't know if that's accurate. I think that we provide the support that's necessary to make sure that our students are transported safely in accordance to the laws that are set for. Another question that we heard a little bit was just in regards to sixth-grade transitions. And we just tried to take a look at some of our current data as it relates to how our students transition from fifth grade to sixth grade and just how they perform. And we just used the Iowa assessment to take a quick look at that. And we can see that, and let's take a look right here. I may have the copies of this actually somewhere. If you wanted, I can probably locate it for you, just for the sake of time. So if we are kind of looking here in regards to our students when they go from fifth grade to sixth grade, we can see that we do see that this year, they pretty much kind of stayed the same, I believe, and just a little bit of a dip in ELA. And we saw more of a drop in math, I would say, as they went forward from grade to grade. What was interesting on doing this research, and I always like it when people push us to go out and make sure that we're looking at research, because you can always find research in many different forms of fascists. This is what I think we're faced with as we talk about having a sixth-grade academy. We always talk about the number of transition. So I think we can all agree on that. The fewer transitions that we have for students, that's probably better. I think there is always questions about where do sixth graders belong, which is kind of an interesting dilemma for us to be in, and how do we just kind of leverage this opportunity that's in front of us? So one headline that reads something like this, well, do sixth graders, do they belong in elementary school? Do they belong in middle school? How do we lessen the blow more or less for sixth-grade students? I think what was consistent in the research is that this is a very pivotal age, it's a very critical age when we're talking about sixth grade and that they need some specialized attention. When we're talking about being able to create, and this is what we would see in either one of our buildings, whether it's the 1,200-student population or whether or not we're talking about the McKinley situation where we have a sixth-grade center or with the 7, 8 situation. The way that we plan to design that is to be able to create a section for our sixth graders. That's critical because they're not really in elementary and they're not quite ready for the transition. We hope around our programming needs to think about how we keep them with fewer teachers to be able to look at the number of transitions that they have during the school day too, so that it feels more like it's designed for the sixth grade for their appropriate age versus them just age versus them just kind of launching into the junior high or high school model altogether. So actually, while it's a sixth-grade center, and ideally, we would want them to be in the same building as well. But again, because we're dealing with the situation of McKinley, keeping McKinley, that location, the population density, all the things that we talked about, that site is not large enough to be able to hold a 1,200-student facility. And so, John, I guess you can help me out here. In our conversations, more or less, we're looking at about 30 acres or so in order to be able to build a 1,200-student population facility at the middle school level. Right now, we're operating around 13, 14...
14.
14 acres at McKinley. So we can't do that. So these are some of the complexities of what we have to deal with when we're talking about where our schools are located and how we best serve our students. But our promise is that no matter the facility that they're in, we're going to continue to talk about the educational program, and the educational program will be the same at either one of those locations.
I would also add to that, that Dr. Grover stated that McKinley isn't large enough for the 1,200-student building. We did go out, had our realtor take a look throughout the city where the opportunities were to purchase land that was in that 30 to 40 acres. And on that southeast side of town or the Washington attendance area, there was no land available to be able to make a purchase of that size.
And again, if that's something that we missed and somebody's aware of it, then, you know, now would be the time, but we weren't able to locate that.
I just have a question. Listening to the meeting with city council the other day, because I was listening remotely, they said they were having their development department look into properties for us. Have we heard from the city? Have they come up with any solution that might be workable?
I did talk to their development director this afternoon on the phone, and they were still working through what the possibilities of that would be.
Okay. Okay. So we haven't really heard anything concrete from them?
No.
Thank you.
So then, just word of some of the, I guess, additional challenges that we're faced with as we kind of have this conversation and as we kind of pondered through how to move forward. And what we really came to was that whether it's a year from now, two years from now, that people, we still will have to put our differences aside to come to some type of plan. The majority of our plan is solid. There is no perfect plan. And the same challenges that we're looking at today, unless something significant changed and we just don't have anything that's signaling that right now, that we would still be right here having the same conversation while our students are waiting on us to do something for them. So as it relates to the timeline, but the realities of this timeline, that it's a hard push to November, that is true. That is true for anybody, for all the people that we still need to get out and talk to. I was surprised last week when I went out to a constituency and I was just, hey, I just want to share the plan with you just to see if you have any questions. They didn't know anything about it in regards to how the communication and the information is flowing. So that part is true, that we still have a lot of ground to cover, and it's going to take all of us being able to share this information, share the why. But moreover, as the second bullet kind of speaks to, is the collaboration. So when we are faced with challenges and we have to make a tough decision, usually the question for me that comes after that decision is, how can I support you with this decision? We're at that juncture because the decision is hard along. We know that people will be impacted in some type of way. So whether it's with the city trying to understand how they grow the city, we want to be a part of those conversations, too. So even though we have to make these decisions now based on the entity, the organization that we lead and that we govern, we still want to be part of how the city grows. If it's true that the housing developments that go up and that we have new enrollment that wherever it lands in the city, we're going to have the same conversation that we're having tonight. Hey, the population has increased in that part of the city. We have to put a school there. We're going to still be having those same conversations at that particular time. For our families, if they do have to travel, if there are going to be resources such as they're worried about whether or not they have facilities for food or just places to be able to gather, we still need to go to them and help them to understand this is the change, but what type of support are you going to need from us during this change? And again, the delay investment. We've talked about that from a financial impact. We've already laid out all the reasons of why our students need this from us. I don't think any of us are arguing about that at this particular point. We understand those needs, but to delay it further is probably what we need to grapple with, whether or not we want to delay making the decision on behalf of the students at this time. With the timeline, you know, it was also presented to me, should we wait? I think we heard that from a couple of our board members, and I think we've said all the reasons why we feel like we should move forward here tonight. But there's always that opportunity, too, to go back out, start over, have further conversation. That's always an option. I think we state the reason why we would prefer to move forward at this time. And again, even if we decide to wait, we know next year, we can talk about what does that stretch look like? When could we possibly have, you know, a plan put together? We could talk about that further in whether or not it's next year or if it's two years from now. So I guess maybe just to conclude our part of what we're sharing here tonight, and we definitely want to answer any additional questions, we're hoping that the feedback from tonight will answer questions that we've heard from different entities. And we're looking to, after that feedback, then we'd be able to establish some bond language with the resolution for approval. We will bring that back on the August 7th board meeting that we already talked about, and then we would move forward with petition signature campaign. And at that time, I think the voters, that would give them an opportunity to weigh in at large whether or not they want to see it go forward for a vote at this particular time. That concludes our comments for now, and we're here to answer any questions or support you in your discussions.
Thank you both for the presentation and for the update. I want to just give the fellow board members an opportunity to get any questions. I appreciate you taking a look into some of the things that we were seeing. I think we saw some concerns about the West Side, right? And so, like, I don't know if anybody else is shocked by some of those numbers, right? That's pretty significant. But when you talk about capacity, how much land is needed, some of those common spaces remain in the same. Is there any flexibility in that? Because when we look at the middle schools today and some of the land that they're on, and we look at 30 to 40 acres that are needed for new school, I mean, is there any flexibility on that that you're aware of?
Yeah, I mean, so that's not like a hard code-driven number. That's really just kind of a standard. And I guess probably what's changed on those buildings, on our existing buildings from then till now, is when we look at, you know, those are four-story buildings. Really, the standard now is no more than a two-story building. So that takes a little bit more footprint, right? The parking lots that we have at those buildings are undersized based on our staff capacity, so we have an increase of a footprint there. Our athletic facilities on the outside, you know, those are not modern-day athletic facilities for the middle school level. Again, that takes more space. Also, within these facilities is we have to have retention, water retention, stormwater retention on this site. That wasn't a thing back in the 1930s when four of these buildings were built, so there is another added acres that we need for that. So really, that's the change, is how things were built then and the requirements they had versus what that is now really leads to that increased lot size.
What has changed since we met last with the city and we talked about the plan as it currently stood that night? What has changed to tonight?
Well, what we feel like we heard was, what about the core? Again, I think we needed to get an understanding of what the core was, right? And so our understanding of the core really is that we have Taylor, McKinley, and Cityview in the core, and we're closing one of those schools, Taylor, which is in a flood zone. Okay? So that's just bringing some clarity, number one, to what they stated. As far as the plan is concerned, we did bring back a second option. If the community taxpayers, the Board of Education, would like to take that upon this, that was just a matter of a tweak to the plan, and that would be to keep Roosevelt, and we would propose building back new, which means that we would have to tear down Roosevelt in order to do that, and that will cost us an additional $56 million in order to be able to do that. If we want indeed to be able to keep one of the schools in that particular area, what we're talking about, Van Buren, Roosevelt, and Wilson kind of closing, you can kind of look on the map and see where those are. And so to keep one of them open would be Roosevelt at the cost of $56 million additional in ask. So we haven't changed anything about the plan except to bring you back a consideration or to let you know our investigation of the schools on, I guess, however you want to look at it, the West Side of town that we believe that they were speaking to. And I don't know if it was so much of the core, but also in consideration of schools that would be defined as some of our most underserved populations.
Dr. Grover, that would be a renovation of the Roosevelt building, just like there would be a renovation at McKinley.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ooh, scrapped that for the script.
So, no. 56?
Are we sure?
That would be the $56 million price tag. That's how we evaluated it for that number, would be a renovation of Roosevelt. And then it would still be a new building at the Taft site that would be a 7, 8, 800-student capacity building.
All right.
So it's 56 million combined between those two or 56 million just to renovate Roosevelt?
Yeah, so it would be in, so the 1,200-student building at Taft, to go from that to a 400-student building and an 800-student building would be an increase of $56 million.
For Roosevelt?
For both. So there'd be a $62 million project at Roosevelt, and we'd have about a $6 million savings at the Taft site. So a $56 million overall increase. Yep.
And I think that goes back, if you want, because we shared a lot of information. Thank you for that clarity. You go back to talk about you're only going to save $6 million by reducing the size of Taft due to the way the buildings are constructed.
Yeah, correct, the way the buildings are constructed. So when you look at those buildings, all the common spaces, your cafeterias, auditoriums, gymnasiums, you're not really decreasing those in size because you're going from 1,200 down to 800. As we look at the middle school level, our extracurricular activities is at seventh and eighth grade. So the need for those spaces is still seventh and eighth grade, even though we only have an 800-capacity. They're used during the day for PE classes at the sixth-grade level, but really, it's that competition after-school activities is what's setting the need or the size of those, so that stays the same. So really, the difference between a 1,200-student building and an 800-student building is the sixth-grade classroom space. So that's why that realization of a savings there isn't as great as what one might think.
Yeah, I have a question. I know that, so this is an incredibly difficult decision, and we've had a lot of feedback about keeping historic buildings. I am wondering if people that are proposing to keep historic buildings, if they've done any work with community collaborators to see how those buildings could be used, who's going to fund it, what's going to happen? I mean, I've heard a lot of, don't do this, but I haven't heard really do this. I've heard, don't do this, but I haven't heard, we've worked with people, we have a plan, we're going to do this instead. So I'm wondering if there's any information about that.
About a week ago, I had a conversation with the city's development director, and I don't have those notes in front of me, but they do that with a lot of their old buildings, that there's an assessment done on what could become of these buildings. So as you start talking about the repurposing of them, that a contractor has an idea that it's been evaluated and what could this be? So when you sell that, that study's already been done to say, here's the opportunities that could be here and what the best fit for these buildings could be based on their size, on their construction, and in the neighborhood that they're in. So we haven't done that, but there would be an opportunity there to do that. I think that answers your question.
One of the, you know, the data that was shared last week by RPS was just talking about just the, you know, the density maps, right? So the idea that you put schools where there are kids. And I know the city was talking a lot about infill development and some opportunities there. Have we explored? It's only been a few days, but is there an opportunity for us to collaborate, to understand what that plan looks like? And then also, the other part of that data was the types of units that are getting built and which ones might have a higher priority, a higher probability of having kids, right? Single-bedroom units may have a less opportunity than a three- or four-bedroom unit, so...
Yeah, I guess I can speak to the second part of that. And yeah, Rob from RSP did touch on that, and he kind of had the graph there of how many students come out of every 1,000 units in a multifamily. And we've seen that decrease over time since he's gathered that data. And that was really Rob's feedback, is that when they look at multifamily units, if it's a studio, a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, you don't always see a lot of students come out of there. But when you get into the three- and four-bedroom units, that's really when that trend changes on the upward slide where we do start seeing more students out of there. So I think as we talk about the infill projects and what type of either housing or multifamily housing that's going in there, that if we can start getting some of those credits for three- and four-bedroom units, that that would really help bring families into there, which would then help our schools.
Yeah, and I think we heard interest in looking at those types of incentives, so certainly, you know, encouraging that and continuing those conversations, I think would be in our interest.
We, so when we think about a sixth-grade prep academy, where or what type of research do we have that shows that's a really good transition between fifth grade and seventh grade? Have we looked at other communities and how they've done it and seen that to be beneficial? Or is it more of a, we're solving the problem of where to put people and not take schools out of the core?
So yes, I think it's a little bit of both. We're here having this conversation because of the building, so we have to try to figure it out and try to be innovative, right? Like, I think the district has a strong reputation of that. And so we've not gone out to visit any sixth-grade centers. There are some out there, just like they have eighth-grade centers, just like they have ninth-grade centers, because those are really big transition years. Where we have spent some time researching is understanding our sixth-grade students, kind of like what I talked about earlier today. And so, and I would say that we could just do our own research among our staff and our students. They understand that sixth grade is a hard transition. So actually, it's sort of like, don't let a good crisis go to waste. This is what we were presented with in regards to the facility challenges, but how can we make the best out of it in an innovative way? And that's what we do believe, based on the research, that there is a way to structure in pretty much the same of what we have. We've tried to do the teaming system here within our organization. We want to be able to do that, but it's harder when you are in a smaller building because you need a certain amount of teachers to be able to do it. And so creating that smaller atmosphere, that's one part of what the research says, and that where students spend more time with the same teacher. So for example, in elementary school, they're pretty much with their same teacher all day. We probably won't keep hours with the same teacher all day, but maybe they won't go to eight, maybe they can go to three. So we've taken the pieces of the research as it relates to their age group to figure out how it would work within the facilities that we put forth for the proposal.
I'm not, so I'm not debating the merits of whether sixth grade as a standalone building is good or not, but I do wonder, when I look at the heat map that was shared, and we've got these, kind of, there's kind of a hotspot around Roosevelt, yet its attendance is lacking, right? And then there's another hotspot out around Taft. Really, if we combined attendance, Wilson and Roosevelt into one, and we did Taft as one, do they need to be separate, sixth and then seventh and eighth?
So what you're asking, Director Newman, is can we have two sixth, seventh, and eighth grade buildings? Is that what we're getting at? Yeah, so really, when we looked at that, what we struggle with when we do that is so they're not splitting up our seventh and eighth graders. And even, and now, we have issues being able to, not only extracurricular with fielding sports teams and being able to do athletics and fine arts... sports teams and being able to do athletics and fine arts, but also just the educational opportunities. So for example, there, you know, it takes, you know, two industrial tech teachers, two band teachers. So be able to create, create those efficiencies with our, our staff and our resources. That's where that really fits us well at that number versus having six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, two separate buildings.
Is it something we could have modeled by RSP that would show what that looks like if Wilson attendance moved over basically to Roosevelt, though? I'm just wondering if that's really true, that they're too small when we take that into account? That they're, that the middle schools themselves aren't that small? Given just, I mean, this is just a map with colors on it, I know. It's hard to see, and we don't know where those lines would be drawn there.
Yeah, so Roosevelt and Wilson, based on last year's numbers, they would be about 900 students. So they, they wouldn't fit just inside of Roosevelt.
As it currently stands.
As it currently stands, correct.
If you want us to verify, we had a long conversation with him afterwards to kind of walk through some of these scenarios as well. Actually, I was just kind of going back through his email here. But just to be able to reassure you, we're happy to go back and allow him to give you an official response to your question.
So I'm going to just take a left turn here. So when we were talking about the fine arts and athletics, and I'm really searching in my brain and coming up, not with a source. Basically, when you're able to build like a sense of belonging around school spirit, you have better behaviors within that building or within that. And I'm not coming up with that source. But I'm just wondering if we're able to, when we're moving kids around, where they're having to do practices and rehearsals and competitions at other areas, it seems to me it would be more difficult to build that school spirit. I'm just wondering if there's a correlation between behaviors and having an ability, or in this case, not having an ability, to kind of build spirit, school spirit around a centralized location.
You know, I think it'd be helpful, as we kind of move this conversation forward, to be able to hear some testimonies from administrators and from students in regards to the current experiences that they're having and how that all kind of plays out. I've had some conversations with our students, and I would tell you, you know, they're very passionate in regards to the athletics and the activities. But due to the way that we're able to compete, it also prevents a lot of students from wanting to participate. And that's one of the big things that they talk about is their school pride and other students cheering them on and being proud of the effort that they're putting in. And in many cases, when they're going other places, you know, whether or not, they always feel proud when they can compete at the high levels. And so I really appreciate your question in regards to when we can bring our resources together and how that might provide a more valuable experience opposed to right now, our resources are spread so thin that it's kind of hard to give them the high quality or level of experience in some cases that they need and even just them wanting to be a part of the process.
Other questions from board members?
I don't, I don't have a particular question, but I just do want to comment on the dilemma, state of the schools page in the presentation. I, nothing speaks to me louder than the items that are on that page, that we are, like, we are doing the bare minimum in terms of ADA compliance. I mean, we're in compliance, but certainly, our old buildings in particular are not easy to navigate for certain populations in our buildings. And they have enough challenges already, and for us to not provide them with the best environment that we can, I think that's on us. And I don't, it's like, it's unacceptable, in my, in my view. The HVAC system, some of us were at that meeting in Madison, and we had a very difficult time hearing in the library because the air conditioners were, were just blasting. And like John said, if you've got 30 elementary kids in that library trying to get something accomplished, trying to listen to the librarian or their teacher with the air conditioning blasting, it's, it's not a good learning environment. So, you know, we can talk about a lot of these other things, but what's the best learning environment for our kids? That's our job, is to provide the best learning environment. I have a lot of thoughts, a lot of thoughts, but like, in the end, that's what it comes down to. What can we do for our kids to make sure they have the best opportunities that, that we can provide? And I don't think we're providing them to all of our kids right now. We can do better.
I completely agree. I do. And then you are absolutely right, and not just Madison, there's other schools as well that the, the HVAC system is absolutely a barrier for learning. And those are the things that are super important when we are making this decision.
Yeah, and we have 11 of those buildings.
11 of those buildings.
With no air conditioners.
So you're right. When all the other stuff is being discussed, at the very root of this, what are the barriers? And there are many in our 31 buildings that are keeping us from being effective with our teaching and quality experience as those kids are there most of the day. They spend most of the time in the classroom throughout the week, and they deserve better. Absolutely.
And on that, I would just kind of like to comment a little bit on ADA compliance, the difference between compliance and universal design. So we have some of our buildings where there are split foyers, and they are compliant because they have on the railing, they have a chairlift that goes up and down the railing. It's an afterfit. It, it's very obviously not part of the originally intended design. I think it does a disservice to students to have them stand out more or have attention called to them in that manner, as opposed to universal design, which is, you know, what we really see at Maple Grove and West Willow, where we have doorways that are wide enough for wheelchairs and where we have modern elevators that work and we have accessibility to all levels of the building. I had kids that went to Roosevelt, and at the top of the stairs, there's a little classroom, and then there's another step, and then there's a hallway, and then there's another step. You can't, like, the ramp to get to that classroom that's at the top of the stairs, you couldn't really do, because it would be so steep that if you lost control, they would go careening down the stairs. I mean, there are some buildings that I just don't think can be retrofitted because of the way that they are designed.
Yes, the original structure of them. Absolutely.
So, John, I have a question about the ADA compliance. And you said that three, three of the buildings, some of, and others are not up to code. How long can we continue to not, to keep our buildings open and we are not compliant? Is there?
Yeah, so I wouldn't say that we're, we're not compliant because it's based on when the age of the building was built. So we're compliant, but we're not compliant for all-inclusive design, like Director Borcherding says. So I mean, we have elementary buildings out there that they don't have elevators and they're two stories. So there's other adapt options you can make, but you're making an adaption at that time. You know, you move programming down to the first level so that it is accessible, but you know, that's not the best environment for kids. Now, is that saying that, will there be a change in code or law that says you need to bring them up to present day standards? I can't predict that, if that would happen or not. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because I think that would be costly, too.
Yes, correct.
That would be a cost to the district.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It seems clear that a delayed investment's going to have a negative impact on kids. You've listed that as one of the challenges. Maybe just let's drive, dive into the other two, further collaboration. I certainly felt the conversation with the city was very productive. I think there was an opportunity for us to continue to collaborate with them. What other collaboration opportunities do you guys see?
Well, I mean, I think the, I guess maybe dilemma that we are discussing, and please let me know if it's something different. It wasn't so much about hollowing out the core of the city, based on where our schools are and what we know to be the core. That's not it. Now, the conversation about where are our schools as it relates to some of our underrepresented families, or this idea that we're taking schools out of our low-income areas. I guess there are many different ways to look at that whole comment together, is that, you know, we're trying to keep schools in a low-income area, or we trying to raise up the income in those areas and make the areas better? I'm not quite sure which way we need to be going with that whole conversation. But as it relates to the collaborations, I do believe that, yes, understanding more with the city, we talked about that, but the families that are there, right? So we do realize that we currently do have schools there. We realize that schools are important to the community. I think that's, that's kind of at least what I've heard, is what people were driving towards, and how is that going to impact our families? So I think we need to be out in the community. If there are community organizations that are there, churches that are there, families that are having these conversations so that we can understand what they absolutely need from us in order to feel supported, heard, seen, valued by the school district. And that's the part of it, I feel like, that maybe we haven't necessarily worked out in regards to if we actually do remove the schools out of the area, as people know it, right? Even as we've stated all of the data, we're data informed and we're values-driven. Our values here at our organization lets us know that we want to take care of kids and families. So I think that's what we need to know. And that's why it's important that as we build the schools, that we build them with the community schools in mind, you know, what resources are going to be available in the schools and available to our students. So I see that as a way, as we think about wherever we land in regards to the new middle schools. This was brought up last week in regards that there are other people to talk to, as well as county officials, et cetera, to bring them along in the conversation. I think we know what we need to do as an organization, but we're still part of the community. We're looking to unify. We're looking to elevate. We're not looking to divide, right? So I think wherever people have questions, we need to be willing to share information, understand their needs, and look for those intersections of collaborations so that we can make sure that we're best serving our community.
If I may, we also have College and Career Ready Task Force that's up and running with our billing. College and Career Ready Task Force that's up and running with building trades, our local labor unions, companies, that's up and running as well. We have meetings set to go out to the Hoover community, as well as the Wellington Heights community, working with some local areas there, Wellington Heights neighborhood. So we have ideas in which to take this more towards the community and ask what those collaboration efforts are.
And I think the other area, too, would certainly be around the housing development. And so I think this idea was mentioned at one particular time, that we need to understand this process of what to do with any buildings that may not be in our inventory in terms of being used at schools, to the point that was made earlier. I think that's a huge opportunity for us. I think, Director Newman, you talked about that, understanding and having people come to us with proposals. I think that's another way to give back and collaborate with the city to understand how those facilities can meet some other additional needs. And I've heard a great deal about housing as an option.
And then maybe if we can just touch on timeline, I just want to hear from, from you and from Dr. Grover, you know, tomorrow is August 1st, right? So we're talking about a bond measure that would happen in November. How does that timeline feel? Is that doable for us?
Yeah, so I guess if we work backwards from November 7th, which would be the vote date, we would have to have, we have to call the election no later than noon on September 22nd. So that's kind of the, the next previous date prior to the bond. So when we look at that, we're, you know, a month and 22 days away from there. In order to call that election, we need to have just under 6,400 signatures on a petition that would be presented to the board secretary in order for the board to call that. So the timeline that that would take to get those signatures, I think we need to make sure that we give ourselves plenty of time in order to be successful there if we do choose to move forward. So I think we're getting tight on time if it, if it is the decision of the board to move forward with a November 2023 election.
If I may just to add to that, so from our original timeline we presented, we would have to stay on track in regards to that August 7th is a key date for us. We hope to bring bond language tonight, but I think this was necessary for us to have the conversation and to be able to reach out to our community as well. But absolutely, we would need a direction at that point to even attempt to move forward. We could not delay getting a vote on the bond language on August the 7th. Anything after that, and I've gotten some ideas, you know, from board members, if that doesn't work out in regards to what the future holds.
So we've got a meeting a week from today. That's when we would see bond language. At that point, we could review it and then decide by a vote of moving forward. Is it the next step, as you see it?
Well, I think the first step would be to, it would get some feedback from you tonight. Do we move forward with the plan we presented last week if we need to? I think, I guess you can put the plan up just for a reference point. We took a look at where we felt like we heard the most conversation. Again, correct me if we missed something, I feel like the most of the conversation was around the west side and the middle school. Let me say that because we still have other schools that are over there, as well as new facilities. Again, you have the map that shows you all of the elementary schools that would be new, et cetera. Even though it just won't be a middle school, we're getting the same concepts at the high schools. So we would need to know, do we move forward with creating bond language around the plan as it was presented? Or would you like for us to consider adding in the concept of Roosevelt as a middle school, however it is, whether it's a sixth grade configuration or a six, seven, eight configuration, but its idea of an additional middle school that would be at least $56 million or more, depending on however you got us? That's kind of where we are in terms of crafting that bond language that would be important. And I guess I would just add one more thing as you're thinking about that. Just remember that when it comes to the middle schools, we're about six years out from the middle school domino, I would call it. And that's around the same time that we'll be going out for the second bond. So you have an opportunity at that point. So we're trying to be transparent with our community by sharing the comprehensive plan, by giving them the overall outlook, with the caveat of knowing that we're going to learn something every year, right? Six years from now, if that's something different, you still have that opportunity to be able to make those adjustments as you go out for phase two. So I just want to provide you with that context. Thank you.
I could certainly speak for myself. I think I want us to be fiscally responsible. I want us to put buildings where the kids are. I want us to collaborate so we know the best as we possibly can where kids are going to be in the future when these buildings are being built. So I, you know, I certainly weigh heavily the impact on students and the delay on that investment. So that's certainly where, where I'm feeling right now.
I appreciate you reminding us that we have six years before the middle school plan swings into action. I think that's, that's an important thing to remember. And also to remember historically that we do take a step back occasionally and revisit the data to see if we're on the right course. I guess I would like to just add to, to that point that the city officials that were here showing concern about closing a west side, two west side middle schools. I think knowing that we have a six-year window before that action is taken gives the city some time to maybe focus their energies on those areas that they would like to see where, where there could be more housing. I know we're waiting for flood protection on the west side. So I think that does give the city a chance to see what they can do. But like, right now, $56 million to keep Roosevelt open seems like too much to ask for the taxpayers right now.
So I think that a lot of the feedback that I've gotten is that there are, there's unknowns, right? Because we're looking at it from a really large, broad angle. And, and I think that there are certainly unknowns that we'll discover and address as, as we move through. But I think there are some things that are known. We do know that maintaining these facilities is becoming more expensive every year. We do know that we're not getting appropriate funding to be able to do school. You know, and, and we do know that, that... You know, and we do know that this isn't going to be, whatever the decision is, isn't gonna be a good fit for everyone. I think one other thing that's important to keep in mind is that the cost of supplies and the cost of building is outpacing inflation considerably. And that is a known as well. So, if we're looking at this from being financially responsible, I think that that's definitely something that needs to be taken into consideration.
And I would like to comment to you that, taking the time, listening to our community when the city council did talk to us and considering the work that needs to be done, that the time is right for us to move forward with serving our students. And like Vice President Garlock said, it's six years out. We have time, we can step back, because we've paused before, to see how we need to move forward. So, I appreciate the update, that was very helpful for me.
Any other comments?
You got nothing?
I agree with so much that has already been said. The main thing, I look at the back of our name tags and how will this decision impact our students? And that is the root of our decision. There will always be reasons why we should wait, but I believe the time is now. And even though it makes people uncomfortable, our students deserve this from us, they really, really do. And also our staff that have to work in these buildings. It's very important to make sure that we are providing awesome opportunities for them to be successful as well. We have time to critique things and reconsider, but to make this decision right now is very essential and extremely important. And so, I definitely support making that decision now.
And to bring voice, Director Mersbrock had to fall off the call, but he says, "I will not vote for an unchanged plan and support delaying sending any bond proposals to voters until next year and developing an extensive new process to come up with the new plan." I just wanted to bring voice to what he had said.
Appreciate that.
Before he fell off.
Any additional comments? Any final?
Yeah, so I guess a final comment for me, and then maybe it's more of an ask than a comment, is the direction to move forward and some clarity around, is it a 1,200-building at Taft or the Roosevelt and Taft conversation? Just because that will make a difference on how the ballot language reads.
I think if there's a way for us to learn about some of the plans for the infill development and where students are gonna be, like, it seemed last week that that wasn't necessarily clear. It was just a genuine interest. I mean, I certainly feel like I, again, speaking for myself, I have that same interest in making sure that buildings are where kids are. So, based on the data that we have right now, I think the plan that you had originally proposed makes sense. But if we know that there's infill development that's coming, six years from now is when we start. So, having that clarity, I think, would really drive where I would stand on that. And I don't know if that's, it's not a definitive answer for you, but it feels like it's the best I can do right now from my own stance.
Yeah, that's helpful. And I guess as I think through it as you're talking, I might be able to bring a couple sets of ballot language for that. So, let me think through that here and see if, how we can handle that, I guess, to keep moving.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Is there an opportunity, since that middle school domino doesn't fall for essentially another six years, is there an opportunity for, I don't know if, I don't want to use the word ambiguity around how we do that, but an opportunity to structure the ballot language for the first part of the plan, with the second plan to be approved by voters at a later date, and to see how that infill development truly happens in our community and get more input from our colleagues at the city?
Yeah, so as we, Justin, can you put up the Phase One plan from the last board meeting? I think you had it up just a minute ago.
He's just giving me this signal. I think that means two seconds.
Thank you, Justin. So, as we look at this, what I'm processing currently is, you obviously don't see the Taft site up there because that would be in the Phase Two bond ask. So, what I'm currently processing is, is would the Roosevelt and Taft projects be in Phase Two of the bond? So, if that is the case, that wouldn't be on this current ballot language, which would then give us the ambiguity six years from now to say, what do we want to do? A 1,200-student building at Taft or the two-building function in the southwest neighborhood? So, I need to, I need to see how that fits in on the finance side of thing to make sure that that's possible. But I think that gives us the ideal scenario to be able to make that decision six years from now when we have a better understanding of what some infill projects may look like in the city. Does that sound good? As long as it works out on the finance side, that's the piece that I don't know.
If you make that work, I think that's our best approach right now. It gives the city time to do what they need to do to do the infill. And if we have students there, then we can justify leaving Roosevelt there. If we don't have an additional, an increase in students, then, you know, we don't justify that, so. But it gives the city a chance to do what they need to do.
It also allows us to really, like, follow where the students actually are and will be and to see data happening in real time over the next five to six years so that we know that we're not just taking a stab in the dark, like, okay, we'll keep Roosevelt there. Let's hope kids are there. I really want to see that happen. I hope that what the city is doing leads to that, and I hope that us being open to that helps them in their efforts. But I think that this gives us more opportunity to be flexible about how we structure those middle schools at that time.
Any additional comments? Again, thank you so much for continuing to come back to the table and work on the plan and listen to the community so that we can make sure that we're moving forward the best possible plan. So, appreciate everyone's time tonight. With no further business, we stand adjourned.